Good evening. Welcome to the Rottling Town Planning Commission, and this is October 26 of 2023. Let's start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag. Okay, welcome everyone. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
We approve.
Second it.
Any discussion on it at all? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we'll go into regular public comment. We're not in the hearing yet, but doesn't seem like there's anyone on Zoom other than Mary Beth. So we'll move to the public hearing, and this is a hearing on a two lot subdivision off Killington Avenue. It's 349 Killington Avenue. And we have the two owners, David and Bonnie Cluckston, with us tonight. Let's. This is a, I'll just briefly describe this. We're subdividing a 7.1 plus or minus acre into two parcels, one of 5.1 and the other about two. And there will be new residences on both of those, or refresh my memory.
The residents that currently exist at 349 Killington Avenue will remain as is. So our plan is just to build a new residence on the two acres.
Okay, okay. All right. Since we don't have any public here with questions, I guess we'll just dive in to this. So the adjoining property owners have been identified, have been notified. We have we have got two different sets of waivers for this. Can is there, it looks like maybe something's changed on October, with the October 8th letter as far as the waivers are concerned. Why don't we, why don't we back up? And since the last time you were here, why don't you tell us what has transpired?
As far as we know, the waivers have not changed, but there could be something that you know that we don't, or that we missed. We're looking at four waivers, 7, 18, 19, and 25. 25 is simply a wrap-up of 7, 18, and 19. 7 is no zoning districts applicable. 18 is too many trees to count. 19 is does not apply. And 25 just wraps up, as I said, the 7, 18, and 19.
Okay, and you've submitted the, you've done the wastewater?
Yes.
And water, you've got the permits. And we've got the six plats?
Yes, we turned those into.
Into, okay, and here's one copy. Well, I guess we all have copies, don't we?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so. Any questions of the Cluckstons? Looking at the permits for a minor subdivision, which this would be in Form Number Two, we need to change those waivers. Okay. How would you like me to do this, Bill?
We could just use their letter to have the record of the waiver requests.
Okay. Okay. So looking at your plats, the title of the subdivision is identified. The name of the municipality. Name and address of owner of record and subdivider. Name and professional credentials of plat designer. Boundaries and area of contiguous total land owned by the owner and of land within the proposed subdivision made and certified by a licensed land surveyor tied into existing reference point. Is that all good? Date, true north point and scale. Identification of the zoning district applicable to the area, and that's the waiver, one of the waivers. Proposed subdivision lot lines with bearings and distances. Streets, highways, easements, sidewalks, and alleys, including names and widths, existing and proposed. Buildings existing and proposed. Is that all in there? Water courses existing and proposed. Municipal and public utility easements and rights of way existing and proposed, existing and proposed, sorry. Sewer main and connections to municipal and community sewer systems or onsite community or private sewage disposal facilities, including sizes and elevations existing and proposed. Water mains and connections to municipal and community water systems or onsite community or private water supplies and lines, including sizes and elevations existing and proposed. We still all good? Drainage systems and connections to municipal and community systems, including sizes and elevations, ensuring culverts with rim and invert elevations existing and proposed. Parks and other open spaces existing and proposed. Other essential features existing and proposed, and now we're down to a second waiver, the location of the trees. And then a third waiver, number 19, all information specified in Provision 9 through 18 hereof with respect to adjacent land of owner and with respect to adjacent land of others to a distance of 100 feet. That's waived. Number 20, contour lines based on accurate ground surveys or combination of ground aerial surveys at intervals of five feet of existing grades and a proposed finished grades where changes of existing ground elevation will be five feet or more. 21, typical cross-sections and profile of proposed grading, streets, highways, and sidewalks. Number two, they're requesting it be waived. If a private sewage disposal is required, it should comply with 10 BSA 1973. 23, preliminary designs of any bridges or culverts which may be required. 24, all parcels of land proposed to be dedicated in public use and the condition of such dedication. And then 25 is waived. So.
So Barbara, can I just ask a clarifying question? I'm sorry.
Sure.
But. The drawing requirements, some of these were asking to be waived, yet we have an answer of yes on the paper that I have. Is that the way it's supposed to be, or?
Say that again.
The answer, or at least, why is circled for all of these
Right.
questions when some of them are requesting a waiver?
Yeah, and Phil suggested we just submit the letter with the waivers.
In place of this, yeah.
Yeah.
That's all.
With it.
Thank you.
It'll take precedence.
Yep.
Okay. Got the water permit, wastewater and water permit. Any other questions of the Cluckstons?
Curious, have you got your well in?
Not yet. Nope. We talked to the builder yesterday and we're mapping out a timeline. So taking it on a slow, slow timeline.
So construction would be sometime next year?
2025.
2025.
Okay.
Pretty much booked up for 2024.
Think we've heard that before.
Are you looking for a motion, Barbara?
We're still on the public hearing stage, actually, right now. So.
What is that blue line that's crossing Killington Avenue? Is that a drainage or something? It's the dash line way down.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a really good question.
We wondered that as well.
It's a culvert, no?
Could be a culvert.
Runs under the road.
Yeah. Nothing in the legend indicate.
Matter of what it is, I was more curious than anything.
Barbara, who's online?
Mary Beth.
When you got your driveway curb cut, has that been approved from the town of where you're going to go in?
That's, that's an extra project as well, so we'll do the cut, the driveway cut and the tree clearing next year.
But you need to get, you need to get approved, you need to get a permit to do that. For the access.
Okay.
So this is the new lot here.
That's right. So the driveway will be on the other side, parallel to the existing driveway.
That's the proposed drive that's off of Killington Ave.
Right.
Mary Beth, did you have any questions? And.
No.
No, you're just on the phone. Anyone else? Okay, let's close the hearing for the subdivision. As awkward as that is, and we're back to our commission meeting, and we'll entertain any motions there are.
I'll make a motion that we approve the subdivision as submitted on the survey plat.
And.
Bronson Spencer dated.
And.
7/25/23, yep.
Okay, would you include the October 8th letter as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Should that motion include the request for the waivers? Or is that what you're saying by including within the reference of the letter?
Yeah. The latter. Wish me. That should cover.
Could I make a friendly amendment then to the motion? To accept as Howard stated with the letter referencing the request for specific waivers to the for the requirements submitted.
Good. Howard, or Andy?
No, okay, I second.
Okay. Ready for the question? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Mary Beth, that sounded like an aye?
Yeah.
Mary Beth, were you in favor?
Yeah.
Probably muted.
Anything else, Phil, that we need to do, the Cluckstons are here?
There'll be the recording fee for the Mylar and then the Mylar duty, that's.
Which is 90 days from today. Anytime within the 90 day period, yep.
I put it on the decision letter there, there's because if it's, if it's late, it cancels the approval.
Got it. Okay.
Survey plat must be done. He made these. Get it in and get it over with.
Yeah, he, the surveyor said that he's ready to do the Mylar.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Glad we were able to accommodate each other's schedules and all that, so thank you.
Welcome back to town.
Thanks, I look forward to it.
Madam Chair, would you be willing to entertain a very brief recess with at least one member of the
Very brief.
Commission, who might take care of a personal?
We're in recess. Okay, we're back. And the next item on the agenda is, we're going down into old business. Continued review of property owners list of the River Corridor. So. I don't, I think we need time to digest some of the things that we have. I've got a list of Act 250 permits, active ones, and Howard, you came up with this list. Let's just go through this and if you would walk us through this and the different color coding and just. Did everybody get?
I sent it to everybody. Emailed it.
I, for some reason, didn't print it, I guess. When'd you send that out, Howard?
It was like the day after the agenda went out, right?
Oh, that was this week. I don't know why I missed.
Tuesday or?
It had been Monday, Monday or Tuesday, I'm not sure. Okay.
It could have been the same day.
It was Monday or Tuesday, or possible Wednesday, I don't know.
Mike, well, I thought it was ahead of things and I freaked stuff out.
So maybe just to go back just a little bit, I'm thinking the next meeting, we will look at the map, we'll go through the whole town and just figure out whether we've got all the addresses and names connected to the right dots and just get that, that part done.
You're talking about connecting the names on properties that are but, that map?
Yeah, that's, those are the same, the same map, just these should be a little bit easier to see the properties.
Right.
So over to you, Howard, on your list.
No, some of these I didn't, I didn't touch. They were already set up and taken care of, but the first one on the first page was 57 Silver Birch Place. And this is a condo here. Up on the, off the East Pizza Road, there's there's four buildings up there, four condo buildings. Now, they've only picked two of them, so apparently the third one is out of the is out of the flood.
Okay.
Yes, but they're all pretty close together, but apparently they're, they're really fine tuned their work. And what I did is I put down the, you know, the four owners of the unit. Their name. Their mailing address, and some of them are, you know, local and some are from out of state. And I assume that these people would be all notified as we go along for, for whatever. They're the owners of the buildings. So that was 50, that was the Silver Birch one, and.
So the 50, there's no 57 Silver Birch, there's 572 A, B, C, D.
Right, right, that, yeah, yep, that's right. But the buildings themselves, if you look on the E911 map, you're going to see 57. But the mail address for these individuals is basically got a two on it with A, B, C, or D. That's the mail address, but the building itself is 57. And the very first address on Marcy Darren, that was one that the mailing address is different from all the rest. Everybody had a mail address like 572C Silver Birch Place. This one here has got 57 Silver Birch Place, and this is something I think that the listeners should change in the, in the grant list and get them, they should all be the same. Because I'm sure that the post office is using like, you know, 572A, B, C, and D.
So Howard, I thought that E911 required distinct physical addresses and locations. So that the 572A, B, C, and D would meet that requirement, but 57 Silver Birch would not.
No, these are actually postal addresses, is what we're seeing, that, that we have apartments and whatnot, the post office sticks in these different mail addresses, but I know what you're thinking, but no, it's, it's not the it's not the same, just these buildings.
So there's no, there's no correlation between E911 and postal delivery?
Well, the 57, of course, is what puts it to the building. It's building, yeah, and there could be some confusion here with you know, the 911 folks know when a call comes in from any one of these, they know what apartment it is. I don't know about the fire department. Do you know?
Never gone there.
Never gone that far. But it's a good question.
But it just seems to be either an inconsistency.
I'll look into that, though. Whatever that, I'll look into that.
It seems strange to me that, that the name of, the number for the multifamily dwelling is a two-digit number, whereas everything else is a three-digit number with a letter.
So Bill, you you'll have an answer for us next time?
That's what you mean when you say you look into it.
But they couldn't, you know, on a typical building, you couldn't put four of these numbers with the A, B, C, and D. It's, again, it's just building 57, and, but Bill, check it out and see what comes of it.
And the next highlighted item?
Yeah, that, that that's a building that's gone. It was Florrie's Motel. That burned several years ago. And it's actually located on the, on the Florrie parcel, the rest of the Florrie parcel there, but but it's, it's gone, and what needs to happen is that, that number really needs to come out of the 911 system because there's no such, there's no such place. So just by taking that number out.
Bill, you want to take care of that, too? Okay.
Now, we get down to the law enforcement, the state buildings, Vermont State Buildings. That's where the state police, the D trains, and everybody is, and in there, they have buildings that are numbered 120, you know, 122, 24, and 25. In fact, there's another number of a building which is for where you get your license and whatnot. It's out there. That's not included here. But these, these four units here are what are in the flood, floodway. And so I guess we would just notify Vermont in general, I mean.
Well, they, that's a good question. We've been told by DEC from the state that they, they must meet other permitting that's similar to the River Corridor, but since they're state buildings, they have their own criteria and permits. So we can probably take them off our list.
Somebody would have to be notified, right? Would the state still have to be notified for this?
Probably, yeah, probably. Yeah. But as far as like reaching out to the occupants?
That's 79 Deepwater Lane, that's the, the exhibit, the railroad station that's down here by Curus.
Okay.
And 702, that's the Florrie Plaza.
Right.
And that's where the Florrie Motel used to be.
Yeah, and that does have a two, Act 250 permit. So it kind of similar to the state permitting thing. It has its own criteria it has to meet for, for Act 250.
Are you talking about 39 Silver Birch or no?
702 Business Route 4.
Oh.
That's Florrie Plaza. So to speak.
And the, the pump station?
That's our, that's the fire district's pump station, which is right near the river, and that does flood. We got flooded out again this year.
Are you covered by state permits?
Well, we're, we're different from a regular wastewater treatment plant, because it's just a pump station. And struggling with the state now, we've we've been looking at the damages that we've had, and with FEMA trying to get, get spread away with it, and we're trying to find out what regulations we really fall under. Because we're a pump station, all sewer plants and everything are a whole different category. Where we come from, because we've, we are getting some assistance from FEMA, and, but it's someone was questioning, but one of the things was a propane tank. We have, we use heat with the propane. Our tank floated away, didn't, stayed within the comp fine, but last two floods, the tank started floating, it broke loose. And 350 gallon tank and all the gas just kept seeping and seeping away. And and we've got to replace that, and now they're making some strict, real strict guidelines to go by. Any propane tank that's within a flood zone like that has to be at least two feet above the flood. You know, the high water flood level line, and and we're trying to see if we're going to get any assistance on replacing that, but I'm not sure if we're going to.
So at this point in time, we don't know whether that, whether that station is, falls under, would fall under the River Corridor for the town. You're still trying to figure out which?
Well, we're well, certainly, we're in the River Corridor, I mean, we're, I would think it, I would think it would.
Okay.
Yeah, the state has some funds available for for some of that, yeah, and it's all being looked at now, so that's, I'm not sure where it rests, that is true.
So what's the question?
The, I think we'll just leave it on the list for now. As a structure that may fall under the River Corridor regulation passed. So another.
Another Silver Birch, and that's, that's the second unit, and again, there's four
391A, B, C, and D.
So is Bill going to check on this one? He checks on the other Silver Birch one? Is that the implication?
Yeah.
Thanks, Bill.
I had a feeling Zero Amanda Drive was not quite right.
Yeah, what it is, is it's an old building, it's a garage of sorts, and if you look on the E911 map now, a lot of activity going on, there's a roadway going in and whatnot, and it may, it looks like it could be. a lot of activity going on. There's a roadway going in and whatnot, and it may, it looks like it could be who knows what apartment or whatever. And certainly, it's definitely in the floodway. There's no question about it. So what that building needs is a number. Needs a nine one one number put on it, and that's, that's no problem. Bill can have that done. But it's it's actually on It's it's on the the building, the building that's right next to it is one eighty-four.
Does this parcel, this building is located on the Where's the listed below reference?
What are you looking for?
Your note. Oh, somebody's note.
It's it's on the third page, one one eighty-four Amanda Drive. Single-family dwelling.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a little confusing because they're spread out.
Page three, one eighty-four.
Now we have another state.
Yeah, that's another state one that was one twenty-two of the four buildings, the four units that were there.
That's not applicable.
So we can remove that one, right?
Yeah. And then the GMP Hydro Facility, we can remove.
You're down to the hydro, the
Yeah, the next yellow, next highlighted.
Yeah, and this this is one, you know, there really are from colonial estates is is part of that development. But the driveway that goes to that, the facility comes out from I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. You're on one hundred Old Falls Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, right in this neighborhood.
One hundred Old Falls Road, that's just, that's right down here, and that's the hydro that's right across from the Pocket Park. And what needs to be done there is it has its own number, its own nine one one number. The number is eighty-eight.
So it should be eighty-eight Old Falls?
Eighty-eight Old Falls Road. And the listeners really should take a correction to that and notify Green Mountain Power that they need to know that.
So are we removing this from the list or are we just changing?
We would, it'd be another like, Bill, can you fix this? And us removing it from the River Corridor list.
Okay, and remove from the list.
Another state place.
One twenty-five.
Yeah.
That's the, that's on that one complex.
That just comes off the list, right? We just don't need that, right? We can remove this?
Right, right. And and before we get to nine ninety-one Business Route four, we've got some two fifty Act two fifty permits in here. Praticos is one of them. So we we don't have to worry about trying to convince them of a River Corridor because they already have to follow some of this stuff. Forty-six Ripley Road. That, that's not the, that's not the museum, but
In fact, it's a it's a big this building right out, right out behind you. The big Curis plant is down the tracks a little bit here, but right, right behind, right behind the furniture store. It's a great big building.
Okay, so that's that's covered.
So when you, when you say that that's covered, what do you mean by that?
It it has an Act two fifty permit.
Oh, so that we don't have to, we don't have to notify them?
Right.
And so does Praticos also have an Act two fifty permit?
Yes.
So we don't, we can take them off the list?
Yeah, exactly. And nine ninety-one Business Route four?
It's located on the Gawa property, what it is, that C and D chopper.
Okay.
It's on the
Okay.
Gawa property, which is eleven oh one.
So why was that highlighted, Howard?
It it isn't, it isn't a property parcel itself. It's just a business. It's a business located on Gawa's property. So aren't we just, wouldn't we just be notifying the
Property owner?
Property owner?
Of of eleven oh one?
Eleven oh one, yeah, which is Jimco, which is the Gawa, the Gawa owns a long strip of property down there.
So so where are you getting eleven oh one, Barbara?
It's in, it's in Howard's note.
This somewhere's
Oh, down below.
Yeah, and then page three, you find the eleven oh one.
Okay.
GMCO properties. Okay.
Okay, so notice goes to eleven oh one. Because this is basically a rental unit. Is that right? A rental arrangement?
I guess maybe the leasing part of the parcel or something, the chopper?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. Let's see, we've got so you, the next one in highlight, you said is not Sandborne Place, but Chisana Drive? But it's a Green Mountain Power facility anyway?
Yeah, yeah, what it is, is again, this is a property originally, it's part of the colonial states property, which is out from East Pitts Road. But this driveway that goes to this property is on the other side of the river and is way down up from, off from Post Road and Chisana and then Sandborne Place. And the the number that nine one one assigned to it is, is the number at that point, because that's the only way emergency vehicles can get there. They can't, they can't get there from colonial states. It's just it's a steep, steep bank that, I think, I think what needs to happen is
Unless they brought the amphibious equipment.
Yeah, but no, I think what needs to happen is the grand list should be corrected and Green Mountain Power notified that this is where there, you know, if somebody calls nine one one from out there. They're going, you know, the nine one one system has has the the eighty-six Sandborne Place built into it.
Okay. So so Bill, do you have a separate list of what should you go to the Wister's office?
Yes. All right, Barbara and Howard, I'm a little confused about the note and then the one below it. Address needs to be changed from Colonial Drive to Sandborne Place.
That's in the grand list, where that, where that needs to be changed.
Okay, the driveway to this parcel is off Sandborne Place. Correction should be made to the grand list, the notification center of Green Mountain Power. But up above, you've crossed out Sandborne Place and written in a hundred Chisana Drive.
Now, somebody else did that. I, what I highlighted somebody else drew a line through that and then wrote a hundred Chisana Drive and and all that is that's all been changed. That, that, when I highlighted it, I meant I was changing what was highlighted. There is no one hundred Chisana Drive.
Okay, so
There is an eighty-six Amborn Place.
So there's no such address for Chisana Drive? And so Chisana, Sandborne Place should be the correct address.
But right now, it doesn't, it's not even, it's not Chisana or Sandborne.
Right.
It's Colonial Drive. That's what needs
Nine one one has it, has it on for Sandborne, but the town is grand list has showing it as
Okay.
Colonial.
Okay.
So to bring them both into alignment with nine one one has, nine one one has Sandborne. Our grand list should have Sandborne.
That's correct, yeah. It's just our records here. Nine one one is correct. It's just cleaning up here and notifying Green Mountain Power that as to what's going on.
And it's a, it would be exempt from River Corridor regulations. Green Mountain Power should have its own should be covered. Before we get to the next highlight of nine thirty-nine Business Route four related property LLC. That's, that's Act two fifty.
That's down here by Gawa again, that's Triple Land.
So when is the seven forty-seven US Route seven? This is the Glen Hydro, Glen Hydro Station.
That's the Glen Hydro Station. You know, the hydro station is a, you know, also there. That's what, that's, and that, of course, that's on part of Green Mountain Power's property, which is twenty-one fifty-four Post Road. And this is going to be exempt.
Which one's exempt? Seven forty-seven?
Hydro Station, yeah.
That is exempt.
It's GMP. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's just, it's a confusing thing to go through when it still needs
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yep, it's going to take a couple passes. And then twenty-six ninety-four Cold River Road.
That's a detached garage, the two-bedroom apartment on it, and it's on parcel twenty-six eighty-six, which is, which was up above.
So this is a duplicate.
Twenty-six eighty-six was actually on the first page.
The Sean Garth, Julie Sean Garth. Okay.
On the second page, it's on the, it's on the second.
Yeah, those are Twenty-six eighty-six Cold River Road is the one. Yeah.
We can just take twenty-six ninety-four off.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The last list, the small streams, we started with with six. But now we have seven or maybe eight with the Creed.
I don't know what happened on the bottom line. There's a missing on Creed, I see.
The address is missing, right?
Probably it's, yeah.
Oh wait, it says one fifteen fifty-three East Pittsburgh Road.
The mailing address.
Oh, you don't
Was it sixteen thirteen?
Actually
Camp on Parcel fifteen fifty-three.
The sixteen thirteen, the very last one on the left there, it's a camp that's on
Parcel fifteen.
Parcel, yep.
Oh.
Fifteen fifty-three, and the owners are are Creed.
Yep.
With their address.
Okay, so that's, that's one location.
So is the E nine one one address sixteen thirteen or is it fifteen fifty-three?
Fifteen fifty-three is the
E nine one one.
Is, yeah, the E nine one one for the owner, for the property owner.
But the camp is sixteen thirteen?
Yeah, it has its own number. It's a separate building.
But there's nobody there. That's rented out.
I don't think so.
That's a rental.
I don't, I don't know if it's active now or not, but it's just a small camp.
Yeah, it's interesting little place.
You have to cross, you drive by, I think you have to cross over a brook to get to it.
But notifying the owner at fifteen fifty-three East Pittsburgh Road will cover that camp.
Oh, so there's the GMP surge tank here in the middle of the list. Is that the water tower?
That's the water tower. It's there. It, these are just little streams. Looking on the maps, they look like a, just a little trickle of a stream of not, not much to it. And maybe kind of wonder how that's going to, I'm sure they've got it figured out as to why it could be flooded.
The area they drain.
There's one on the, down on Vermont Route three, that's single family, the third one down. It's a Dickinson's used to live the farm down there. Just beyond there, there's just a little, sort of just a little teeny dip in the road. There's a little looks like a stream coming out to Hill. I don't even know what it, I've hunted up there a lot before. I've never even seen a stream up there, but there's a there's evidence of what could be a stream. The only thing I can think of is the water from Otter Creek could back up and go through a culver and go back over to where perhaps where they are.
You wouldn't think it would be that intermittent to be included. You know, you would think it'd be more permanent.
As a river corridor.
As a, yeah.
Oh, when you look at these on a map, you'll see that they don't look like much of anything.
Yeah, we can, well, we can bring it, we can bring any of these things to the state's attention, too. So being a GMP facility, we can probably take that off the list.
You're talking about the water tank?
Yeah. Okay, so then we're back down to six parcels.
Yep.
All right, let's it's interesting, the Act two fifty people were very good. I sent them all of the business and commercial addresses. And I I've mentioned the only ones that have Act two fifty permits. There's really only three, but there are twice or three times as many that should be under Act two fifty. So, but they're not. So I guess that's good news for them, bad news for us, because we'll have to contact those people. Yeah. And talk this over with them. So let's clean up these lists and then we'll cross-reference a cleanup list with the map next time. And just look at that and and, you know, come up with come up with who we need to contact and maybe questions we have for the state. Howard's already having fun.
Thank you, Howard.
So we'll do that next time. Is Mary Beth, oh, did she leave? Okay. Well, next on the agendas is Act forty-seven. Bill, have you, you, you did the minutes and you kind of got the drift of this, how it may affect our, our new subdivision, our draft subdivision ordinance?
I haven't heard anything, Dr. Kevin, on it, so.
See, you've already asked.
No, no, I haven't, I haven't heard anything come out at all.
Um, okay, on the subdivision ordinance. Well, why don't you remind him that we're still looking for that and and his opinions on Act forty-seven? That's going to, how much is
Better do it now, just after, so.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Is there, since I wasn't present for the meeting, is there some particular focus that would be particularly pertinent to us besides the parking?
Yeah, there were, there were four, five, six provisions in there that would apply to municipalities with that that provide municipal water and sewer. Those provisions in most of the Act are zoning regulations to, to make it easier to put in multi, multifamily housing and and the like, just get more housing on the market. And they came up, you know, and then there was these four, five, six that included not just those with zoning, but those that provide water and sewer. Water and sewer. So that would be us. And so um. We want to make sure that. That Kevin agrees that that is us and then it's like how we shoehorn these zoning type. Regulations under Act forty-seven into our subdivisions.
Oh, we adopt zoning, we don't have to worry about it.
That would take care of it, you would think. So um. I I don't think this is gonna be a quick answer from Kevin either because um. A a lot of towns are trying to figure out what does that mean? So, Post Road Solar, you remember that?
Yep.
Off Route seven? Um, uh they, the application process is taking longer than they thought. Um, they're probably looking at a final application no sooner than December. So that gives us time to do a site visit if we still want to do that, the corn hasn't been cut yet. But that is supposed to happen in the next couple of weeks. So the developer is opening, open to taking us out there. Uh, and the select board, if members can make it. They're they're open to that as well. Um, so we're looking at probably. Anytime starting with the week of November thirteenth. The corn should be. Out.
And people realize that it's gonna be dark.
It's gonna be, well, yeah, so we wouldn't you, we wouldn't be able to use our meeting time. So. Yeah. Is there still interest? To walking that. Property and asking questions, where is this gonna go? We could do it over a noon hour or. Maybe three-ish.
That wouldn't go much later than that, though.
Yeah, after, after.
It's gotta be getting dark at four thirty, right? Well, may not be four thirty at that point, but it'll get to four thirty by the time winter comes on.
There's even a little long to look. Look it over.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. I mean, we could um, we could do a site visit instead of our meeting on the sixteenth. And just. You know, keep working away at this River Corridor stuff. So yeah, our next meeting is the sixteenth, so that's the week that. We could start thinking about a site visit. And wouldn't want to probably look at the week after that, because that's Thanksgiving.
I mean, yeah, tha- that's about as ideal a time.
You can't push it any further than that.
I mean, Barbara, you could probably do that as part of the. Planning Commission meeting and then re-reconvene here for any other business that we have to transact.
If we had some, yeah.
Yep, so you go at three or three-thirty and then you come back here and. And then we just warn the the normal. Planning Commission meeting for four thirty or something.
Well, I I think we we need to warn site visits, right?
Oh, we do?
Oh, just just play it safe.
So then it'll be one warning, site visit followed by. Normal PC meeting at whatever time.
If needed.
If needed. And then we should be done by five.
We're starting when?
I don't know, I was slowing that up, you said three and I jumped on that because it's light at three.
Right.
Yeah, we have plenty of time.
By daylight or plenty of?
Plenty of daylight time.
Yeah. Okay, so the sixteenth at three, I'll see if the developer can do that. If he can't quite do three, um. Maybe we could push.
We're bringing nine or ten people for three o'clock, that's when he needs to be there.
Okay.
Coordinating ten schedules.
It's gonna meet probably up where the armory is, I mean, you can't pack on Route seven. To get in there and and if we don't get close enough to it, we'll waste more time walking to it.
I know, that that was another question I had for him. I mean, it's it's possible, yeah, well, yeah, the gate's is locked most of the time. But it's possible with the corn, once it's cut, we could go in on the farm road there and just. Possible.
You have a farm road on that, okay, somehow they get to it.
There's a curb cut, yeah, and.
So.
We can meet here and drive over there and. And yeah. Wouldn't need more than two cars.
That's a good idea. Carpool.
Or even meet at sewards. They got plenty of parking spaces.
We're still talking about three o'clock, right?
Oh, yes, yeah, well, we could meet at sewards and just. You know, group up into cars.
Yep.
The select board doesn't have any big committee meetings or anything that afternoon?
On the seventh?
On the sixteenth.
So are we accepting Andy's suggestion of of meeting at sewards?
Yeah, that's a good one. And I'll um try to find out if they if they're thinking about changing anything. You know, we had. We were wondering about if they could. Move, extend the setback a little bit, make it bigger. From Route seven. What are some of the other things we were talking about? Uh, we we wanted to make sure. In. In the the uh the um. Surveys, not the surveys, but the. The 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 images that they had put together of the screening, the vegetation screening. Um, that's didn't seem solid, we had questions about that. Can't remember what else.
The screening sometimes, I noticed, you know, going down Cold River Road, what screening that they put in initially. Looked like much of anything. Now that it's, you know, blossomed up and growing, it it's effective now.
Yeah, they um, there is a wetland in the middle of the property, so they can't go too far. The setback can't be increased too much from Route seven. And and oh, now I remember they also, um, I'm not sure if they've done their archaeological work yet. Because they were just gonna use all of that parcel. And that that won't be allowed, most likely. Okay, November sixteenth, three o'clock at sewards. Any announcements?
I apologize for forgetting. To let people know that I was not going to be here on the fifth. Because I was up north for my son's wedding. And I was too preoccupied and I don't think I even paid attention that Bill sent out the announcement that week, that's how oblivious I was.
For some reason, we kind of knew.
Did I tell you, Bill?
Oh, I wasn't here.
But I apologize for not letting people know that I wasn't gonna be here, I was too preoccupied with floors and windows and. Logistics and all kinds of things, so.
What's going on with the bucket park?
Oh, jeez, I don't. Nothing new there, um, is is anybody doing any any work there? Has anyone noticed any activity? Yeah.
Where where does that reside, does that reside with the select board or are we still?
No, no, it it with GMP, totally with GMP. And it's relicensing and the things, the last batch of studies and assessments it needs to do. Um, for its relicensing. It's it's not willing to entertain much of anything before that's, before it's got that all done. Uh, Bill, anything from the select board meetings, the dog park or?
Uh, the dog park is on, that topic needs, we need to figure out ownership before we do anything.
The school or the town?
That's the, that we need to go back to that, so that's, that was discussed at the recreation meeting.
That would be at Northwood.
Budget discussions are being started, I mean, I know our, this portion is fairly short, but. Maybe by the twenty-first, you want to have, or by the uh sixteenth, maybe have a discussion about it that night. Whatever you think you need.
So i- it's a governance question about whose domain it's in, whether it's.
Where are they gonna put it up there, Bill?
There 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 is no plan for.
Oh, there is no plan yet, okay.
There there are people that are petitioning the board. For things that violate park rules, like it's just. There's a, take a step back and start to start it with. There's two, because there's school property and town property in the park. And how it got where and who and when and how needs to be determined before we really do anything else at this point, so.
We've been walking up there almost every day and there's plenty of dogs there.
I mean, they're on a leash.
I I would say all of them, that, yes, I haven't seen that, anyone unleashed.
I mean, a dog park would most likely bring even more dogs. Northwood Park. But there's a pretty strong vocal group that's. That's trying to talk the select board into this.
Into the, into the park?
Into the dog park, yeah.
Pretty important, so.
And the Cortina, how are the negotiations going?
The board has sent an agreement on and we're way to your back.
Meanwhile, um. They expect to still be taking the vouchers and people through March or April, but it's, the number is dwindling or or getting smaller.
Is the agreement available online? Okay.
It's confidential.
Oh, okay.
It's not, not available during the select board meetings either.
That's because it's negotiations and it's uh subject to executive section.
Contract negotiations, pending litigation, so it's all confidential at this point.
That's all under open meeting law exemptions.
So there was one development that they could talk about was the Act two fifty permit.
Right, that's.
It was violated by the hotel doing the voucher system, right? So is there any action on or any talk about doing anything about that or are they just waiting for?
There have been executive sessions on pending litigation and I I don't know.
Okay.
That's what I would have liked the answer to is whether they're going to agree to not go again, you know, that the owners want. An agreement that the town not go after on under Act two fifty.
The owners don't want to.
I haven't been part of the negotiation, so I don't know what was.
So I just don't know.
So what is, oh, what's the alleged um infraction of Act two fifty?
Change of use?
Violation of their permit.
Change of use?
They're permitted for a hotel. That's that's the basis for change of use, I'm.
Have any other communities used, gone through Act two fifty like this to?
I don't know. There's not that many that are, that have the level that we are dealing with, so.
Not a good situation.
So, on your announcement end, uh, I I can say this now that I have. Uh, a new affiliation with Brock that we are sending out outreach coordinators and social justice. Um, members of the Brock team as well as economic development to meet with people. Uh, to help uh in a transition to um more permanent housing. For those, huh? For those who are um. Uh, properly positioned and have the right uh resources and supports to do that. So it's interesting that a year and a half ago. There was an exchange about the select board saying that there needed to be a transition plan. And I suggested that I could probably be part of that, I I didn't realize how prophetic that. That that observation would would turn out to be, so.
Are people making use of the?
It has just started, oh, we have all kinds of people who make use of Brock. I can't tell you what those figures are, but there are some people and we are sending teams now. Uh, trying to work more um intensively with the folks there. Out of those three agencies, economic development, I'm actually in economic development with my, I'm not doing that work specifically. Uh, I I work with clients who are in uh multifamily. dwellings as well as for individual home ownership and I counsel them on. Um, a variety of financial and energy saving matters. Uh, this is an outreach to help people move out of transitional or move out of. Emergency housing, temporary housing into a more stable situation, so they would probably become client or could become. My clients as they get a s- stable situation with stable income.
Is there housing to put them into?
O- once again, um, I, that's not my area, uh, we do have a housing. Uh, department and uh they provide resources to a lot of people. Uh, those who are looking for uh affordable housing, but also and uh under HUD and Section Eight. Uh, but also, uh, they maintain lists of uh properties that are making. Uh, units available at reasonable prices, so that people who are looking to upgrade. Um, from what they have or expand, uh, can do so, so. Uh, it it's quite an uh extensive network and then Brock is connected with other housing. Um, agencies in Rockland County and Bennington as well. So, anyway, for what that's worth, I I just thought it was. Uh, in- interesting when I learned that we were doing that outreach. But that was something I had suggested eighteen months ago.
Any other select board related things we need to know? Missed a meeting or two. Okay. There've been some long ones.
No more, hey, hey, Bill, they're more exciting in person. What's that?
They are more cutting in person.
Okay, the minutes for October fifth.
Yes, move to approve the minutes of October fifth. Second.
Second, okay. I channeled my. You know, the norm, Cohen, as much as I could, I, but I could not find anything.
So one question before we go too much farther down this road, since that is part of our uh rules of procedure. Uh, I was not present. At the the meeting on the fifth. Therefore, I will not be voting. Uh, the other four members present here, were all of you present at the meeting on the fifth? Actually, you just have to check the list, Howard, Barbara, Andy.
Yeah, we're always here.
Okay, great. So you have a quorum.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I I I made the motion.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just said I can't vote.
Yeah, you're really confusing.
I'm sorry. I like to do that.
Did you second it too?
Nope, that was Andy. I have limited powers here, probably.
Any discussion, any changes? All those in favor? Abstained, abstained, okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.